Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school board meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening, and we understand the great responsibility vested in each of us as we make decisions on behalf of the children of St. Bernard. We are grateful for the hard work of our teachers and ask that you bless those who choose to be a guiding light to their students. Help each teacher to understand the impact that an earnest, caring teacher can have on the life of a child, and help us give to each child the foundation and the opportunity necessary to exercise the talent you have placed inside each one of them. These things we pray in your name.
Amen.
Ms. Bowman, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voeche.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Dreegan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Lamore is not with us, Mr. England.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. First item on the agenda, the communication. Oh, wait, before we go on to the first item, I'm so sorry. I wanted to take a point of privilege to acknowledge one of our visitors tonight who's attending the meeting, Ms. Megan Lancaster. She is the Andrew Jackson Band Director and a former Teacher of the Year. Thank you for being with us, Ms. Lancaster. Nice to have you. Okay. Now, going on to the agenda items, we have a communications update with SuperNews. And with us tonight is Ms. Pritchard.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. We have a lot of exciting communications updates for all of you tonight. Since I saw you last month for our September edition of SuperNews and Communications Update, we put out quite a few exciting press releases, and so I will not read through all of them. You'll see most of them featured on tonight's SuperNews, but I did want to provide you with a hard copy that you can take home and review. The first of which was the announcement of Mr. Michael Morel leaving our food services for St. Bernard Parish Public Schools. The second of which was our Shawmet High School Film and Video Production Class when they interviewed Wild Bill of WGNF. The third, on page three, press release/media that I'm providing you with tonight is the feature that WGNO did on Mr. Wayne Warner, Principal at Shawmet High School. There is a video, it's very lovely, that goes along with this. It is available on WGNO's website. The next one on page four is a press release that discusses our Ring Day celebration that we were able to have last week. Thank you, all of you, for being there, if you were able to be there. On page five, it's our press release discussing how AAS-A donated to, through their Helping Kids Mini-Grant Program, they donated to us. Through that mini-grant, we were able to purchase for all of our schools sensory therapy boxes, as well as some social and emotional learning tools for our schools. What went into each school is detailed in this press release here for you. We also wanted to mention, on page six, that this week is Reverend Week. And so, our theme is Strong Together Against Bullying and Drugs. We'll be featuring the themes that have been happening in our schools later this week for all of you to see. Moving on, which I believe you will see in just a few minutes, St. Bernard Parish Public Schools has once again been recognized for 28 years of financial excellence. And so, we pushed this press release out yesterday. We also kicked off our academic game season. More about this will be in the November edition of SuperNews, but we did want to take a moment to congratulate all of the students that participated in our academic games for a job well done. And we can't wait to see all of our students that are participating in the academic games for our next tournament that's scheduled on Friday, December 3. And then, a sneak peek of a press release that will go out tomorrow morning around our Teachers of the Year for this year. If it's okay with you, I'd like to just take a moment and name those excellent educators. For our Elementary School Teachers of the Year, we have Henna Jayber from Araby Elementary, Megan Araby from Arlene Miro Elementary, Alicia DeSau from Shawmet Elementary, Megan McMullin, Joe Davies, Sarah Morales from J.F. Goche, Kelly Bergar, Lacoste Elementary, and Taylor Lopez from W. Smith Jr. Elementary. Our Middle School Teachers of the Year are Daniel Munch from Andrew Jackson Middle School, Brooke Royce from N. Petrus Middle School, and Heidi Scharfenstein from St. Bernard Middle School. I'd also like to mention that all three of our Middle School Teachers of the Year were part of our Teach St. Bernard program. Our High School Teachers of the Year are Justin Templett from Shawmet High School and Robert Morello from Raleigh Alternative. So, congratulations to these very well-deserving educators. We also wanted to provide you with some analytics. For our Facebook page, in the last 28 days, we've had 1,096 page views, a post reach of 29,598, 11,327 post engagements, and we have 36 new followers. Our Twitter account is still very new, but we've had over 46,000 profile visits, which is up 11 and 1/2% from the last prior 28 days, and we have four new followers. Our district website analytics for the last month, we have, in the last 28 days, over 60,000 people visiting our district website, that doesn't include our school websites, just our district website. We have 191,634 total page visits views and 179,000 targeted visits. And so, we're doing really well with our social media outreach with using our websites to provide all of our announcements and making sure that our information is updated and easy to find and user-friendly. I also wanted to provide you with a copy of our graphics for our most recent Teacher Feature Tuesdays. You will learn more about these incredible educators in just a moment, but I also wanted you to have the graphics in front of you. If you move to page 15, I also wanted to provide you with some pictures from our St. Bernard Day on the Bayou and wanted to thank you once again for all that you do. There are some pictures here, but I really also wanted to make sure to shout out our amazing maintenance crew for the hard work that they did that day. The weather was a little difficult, it was raining on and off, and they still were able to make amazing progress for the residents that were impacted by Hurricane Ida. On page 16, we have for you some pictures. We were visited by Senator Sharon Hewitt and Senator Bill Cassidy, and we just thank them for taking the time to meet with representatives from our parish. I also provided each of you with a copy of the St. Bernard magazine because there were some really lovely features that featured some of our board members and some of our teachers. And so, on page 33, we have a prior CHS student, Kyle Lawrence, that was featured here for you. On page 36, our school board president was featured in "The Love of St. Bernard." And on page 38, we have our current 2022 Louisiana Teacher of the Year, Shawmet High School educator, Annalise Cassar Todesco. I also wanted to mention to you that the National Teacher of the Year application is due early next week, and so Annalise has been working very hard. And we all wish her the very best of luck in moving on to submit her National Teacher of the Year application. With that said, any communications updates that I glanced over will be detailed for you in just one minute with our October edition of SuperNews. Jack Ferry, whenever you're ready, we're ready to watch our SuperNews for this month.
Shawmet High School seniors got their rings, Ms. Voeche got an award, and our friends on the bayou got much-needed help. All these stories and more coming up on this month's SuperNews.
Hi, I'm Lexi Pritchard.
And I'm Barry Lamore, and welcome to SuperNews, where we take a look back at all of the good things happening here in our school system. We'll begin with a Wild Bill sighting at Shawmet High School when WGNO-TV reporter Bill Wood visited the campus recently. Wood, a multiple Emmy Award-winning journalist, was at the school for a story featuring longtime CHS Principal Wayne Warner.
Most of us watched the clock waiting for the moment we could break down the front door and escape from high school, but not you, Wayne Warner.
I loved all the activities, I loved the teachers, I loved the students who were my peers. I enjoyed every day. Come on, just keep going.
As principal, Wayne Warner is the top teacher and the head coach in charge of his team of 2,200 kids.
During his visit, Mr. Wood also graciously agreed to be on the other side of the camera, being interviewed by students from the school's Film and Video Production Class under the direction of Ms. Andrea Morningstar.
Can you describe your regular day as a reporter?
I can. I get up really early, about 4:00, and I have coffee, and then I'm at the studio by 5:30. I go on the air at 6:30, and I introduce the story that we've usually shot and edited the day before. So then, when I'm done, what Justin and I do, Justin is my photographer, producer, editor, we'll meet and go out on a story like the one where we are today at Shawmet High. We'll put that together, and then that runs the next day.
We also had a pair of guest artists on campus recently as part of the Art Strong Series. First up was dancer and aerialist Alyssa Marie Reed, who spoke about her performance career and conducted a masterclass for the students in Ms. Jessica Gorbney's dance studio.
You have to work so hard and be diligent and keep going, even though you think it is dire. If you want it, you have to go get it for yourself. There is nobody that will just call you out of the blue and say, "Hey, do you want to be a dancer?" That's not happening. You have to go to the classes, you have to go to the auditions, you have to do all those things, and the world is changing a lot. And so, you actually have to change what you think success is. So, during the pandemic especially, I was doing a lot of film, I was doing outdoor performances, I was doing performances in non-traditional spaces, and so you really have to be very adaptable and say, "Yes, I want that, yes," if you really want it.
Singer Tyrone Chamber also took part in a masterclass for students interested in performing arts. He spoke about the challenges and strategies for pursuing a college career onstage. Mr. Chamber also performed several selections as part of his visit.
And speaking of visit, let's head over to Tris Middle School to meet its SuperNews team there.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Ludwig.
And I'm Jackson Nuez, and welcome to Tris for our SuperNews segment. And we'll kick off with our news day with football. Get it? Football? Kickoff? Anyway, for the first time in nearly two years, the members of our pirate football team took to the field. Fans in the stands, action on the gridiron, and performing groups, united in excitement and celebration, were all part of the fun.
And while there were a lot of our Tris family members at the game, some members of our team are always there for us at school. Recently, eight faculty and staff members were recognized for their commitment to education, receiving perfect attendance for the 2020-2021 school year.
Another faculty member getting recognition recently was our very own Ms. Caserta. He was recently honored with a Golden Apper Award for his outstanding work in the classroom.
It's teaching students about different life skills and job skills that they're going to need in the future, especially after they graduate from high school. Because we saw a lot of students, you know, like after they got out of high school, they didn't quite have a plan, and now having a plan is, you know, our focus.
Congratulations, Mr. Caserta, and thanks for representing us all so well. And before we leave, we'd like to introduce you to the third member of our team, Mia Belsom.
And it's now my privilege to share this new segment for SuperNews called Principal Spotlight, and now Ms. Denise Pritchard.
Hi, I'm Denise Pritchard. I'm the principal of Tris Middle School, and this is my 33rd year in education. I actually did not want to be a teacher. You know, when I was younger, I'd play school with my little stuffed animals and things like that, but I went to school, to college, I wanted to be a lawyer. But the part of the curriculum and the classes that I took were the things that made me realize, I think I want to teach. Whenever I had to present or teach other students what we were doing, I liked it and kind of gravitated towards it. I had a roommate who was in education, and I liked what she was doing more than what I was doing. And so, I went into education, and I knew right away it was what I was supposed to be I never intended on being a middle school principal, but I did teach middle school. About 10 years ago, Ms. Voeche came to me and asked me to come and lead Tris Middle School. Came here, and I've been here for 10 years now, love it. Teaching elementary school was one of my favorite things to do, and I did run a middle school, I mean, an elementary school for a little while, but I think the lessons that I've learned about being a principal, no matter what level you are in, is to recognize the talents of your staff and bring them together all around you. You can't be an island and run a school. You're more effective when you have a lot of people around you and a team, and I've learned that in so many situations. I don't want to leave because I don't want to leave part of my family. You are not alone. We have a lot of support for struggling and for new teachers. Once teachers get here, they kind of get sucked into our family and don't want to leave. For me, it's a lot about family, it's about relationships.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard, for all you do. Hey, Jackson, did you hear Ms. Pritchard tell our eighth grader to swing a ladder to Shawmet next year?
A ladder? Why?
I guess because it's a high school.
I guess. Anyway, thanks for tuning in today, and now back to our friends at Penn TV. Bye.
Nice job, Pirates. I know I'm new here, but that Ms. Pritchard seems like a great lady. In other news, our CHS seniors celebrated quite a milestone recently with Ring Day. Held on the field of Bobby Knust Stadium, this ceremony is a major milestone on our seniors' path toward graduation and the ring, a true symbol of class unity.
So, in conclusion today, on this special day that is just for you, I ask our seniors to take this moment, to look around and to take it all in, to appreciate your surroundings and all of the people that made this moment possible. Think about your family and your friends, your coaches and your teachers, and of you and your classmates who achieved so much together.
Congratulations to the class of 2022. We'd also like to salute our teachers who were recognized by their schools in our weekly Teacher Features.
First up is Monica Ox, a fifth grade teacher at Joseph Davies, who truly makes a difference in the lives of all of her students.
Erica Loa of Raleigh was also a featured teacher this month. Described as an "out-of-this-world relationship builder," she brings a contagious energy, passion, and positivity towards her students and school each and every day.
We'd also like to congratulate a duo at Miro Elementary, coaches Robert Gilchrist and Woody Mulkey. Referred to as a "dream team" of PE at Miro, these two engage students and encourage healthy lifestyles and choices.
Brian Vizi of St. Bernard Middle School is our fourth and final Teacher Feature for this month. Brian is a positive, enthusiastic teacher who loves his curriculum, students, and colleagues. He is kind, caring, and meticulous.
Congratulations to all four of these outstanding educators who truly show they care.
We'd also like to recognize our superintendent, Ms. Doris Voeche, who was recently recognized at a Bessie meeting for her 50 years of service in education. During the gathering, State Superintendent Dr. Kate Brumley and Bessie President Sandy Holloway took a point of privilege to spotlight Ms. Voeche and commend her accomplishments, leadership, and lifelong commitment to education, and her compassion for the students in Louisiana.
Really, the most important thing that we can do for every child in the state is to put a qualified and good teacher in every classroom, and we've had those discussions before. And hopefully, in the couple of years that I have left on this ward, I really do want to make that a major focus in making sure that we've got quality teachers in these schools.
Care and compassion were also at the heart of a recent trip to Galliano, Louisiana, a small town devastated by Hurricane Ida. Through St. Bernard Day on the Bayou, our school system took part in a goodwill effort with our parish government, Noonan's Community College, and dozens of volunteers and businesses to bring much-needed supplies, food, and help to a community in dire need. Our neighbors on the bayou truly need our support, so please help how and when you can.
And now, let's head over to Lacoste Elementary School to meet its SuperNews team.
Hi, I'm Rami Dally.
And I'm Kate Bryan. And welcome to the home of the Bulldogs, Lacoste Elementary.
We'll begin our SuperNews today with a quick look at Johnny Appleseed Day, keeping up with the tradition our first graders have done for years. Our students celebrate his birthday by wrapping their favorite apples and eating anything and everything that had apples in it. First graders celebrated with a feast at the end of the week.
Hey, Rami, yesterday I just saw an apple sitting in the middle of George Perez.
I guess it ran out of juice.
And while our first graders were learning about apples, our second graders were learning about fairy tales and tall tales. After finishing their unit, our students celebrated at Tall Tale Day, dressing up as lumberjacks, blue oxen, and princesses as part of the fun. To top it off, each student enjoyed a pancake breakfast in their classrooms. Yum!
Our school also celebrated literacy recently. In addition to hosting our first classic book fair of the year, our Bulldogs dressed up daily as part of bringing literature to life. From college attire to Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs, we all had a great time celebrating the joys of reading.
And now, let's meet the Bulldog in charge here at Lacoste, our principal, Ms. Morel.
So, my name is Heather Morel. I am principal of Lacoste Elementary, home of the Bulldogs. I just finished my 18th year in education. I've always prided myself in having a good relationship with my staff. We're not just a staff, we're a family here. That's when I came in, that was the one thing I felt like I wanted to get across. I kind of feel like they know everything already, but with that being said, if I had to have one takeaway, they know you're only as strong as the people you work with. I have always lived by that, so I'm only as strong as they are. So, ultimately, if they fail, I fail, and I have repeated that to them multiple times. And this is not the Heather Morel Show, right? It's Lacoste. We are a family of almost 80. It takes all of us to make sure that day in and day out, our day goes smooth. We are all equal, and our roles are equal. It does not matter your job here. With our theme being unity this year, it kind of reminds me of the year we had our theme of connections. Same thing. You know, we're only as strong as we are united, not divided. So, I even put a quote to my staff this year in my opening letter to them. It reminds me of our country, right? United we stand, divided we fall. That's how I look at our school.
Thanks, Ms. Morel, for all you do for us.
And thank you all for joining us today for SuperNews. We'll see you next time from Lacoste.
Bye.
And we'll end our program today with another feature from Lacoste Elementary School, a day to remember for two sisters who were part of an incredible reunion. Their dad, who just returned home after an 11-month deployment in Iraq, came to the school as part of a big surprise for his girls. It was truly a feel-good moment and a reminder of how important it is to thank all of those who serve and sacrifice for our nation.
The liberty and justice for all commit to our home. Come inside. Boys and girls, can we say welcome home? Say welcome home!
Thanks to all who serve, and thank you all for tuning in today to SuperNews.
Where we always let the SuperNews roll.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Pritchard, for that wonderful SuperNews. We appreciate it. Always well done, yourself, Jack, and Barry. Great job. And I just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, on behalf of the entire school board, we want to congratulate all of the Teacher Focuses and also all of the New Teachers of the Year. We know that many of our teachers work very hard every day, and the Teachers of the Year who are named, you know, have been voted upon amongst their peers, and so we want to say thank you for all of your hard work, Teachers of the Year, and also the Teacher Features that were featured tonight and Principals that were featured. And congratulations to you, and we want to say thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. And also, we want to thank the AAS-A for their mini-grant donation for the special education sensory items. Very much needed, and we do appreciate their donation and their contributions to that. And anyone else, or any questions, any comments? Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Pritchard, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next item on the agenda is the recognition of the receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Board Officials Awards for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Mr. Fernandez, you're up. He's hiding that there. Yes. More than that.
Okay, as you have in your packets, we've once again received the Certificate of Excellence from both the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officials International. This is the 28th year that we've received these awards. So, we're closing in on 30, we're not quite there.
Did you say 28?
Yes, ma'am, 28.
Wonderful.
And I remember every one.
What did you say, Dave?
And I remember every one of them.
Were you there for the first one?
I was. Although Ms. Voeche is the one that submitted the first.
Ms. Voeche was the supervisor of finance.
Supervisor of Finance. Support Services.
Well, on behalf of all the board members, so we want to congratulate you and Ms. Voeche and your whole staff and team for getting both awards, a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and the Certificate of Excellence for the Association of School Business Officials International. And I know we say this every year, but not every parish gets these awards. In fact, I remember in the beginning, there were only one or two parishes in the state that received these awards. And Mr. Fernandez, you said, it's been 28 straight years, which is a wonderful feat, and it just shows wonderful accounting practices and that this school board and school system are good stewards of the public's monies. So, we appreciate all of your hard work, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Voeche, and all of your staff members, Mr. Fernandez, who do an excellent job of making sure that everything is where it's supposed to be and being spent the way it is, and we have all those checks and balances, and, you know, everything's above board and straight, and we appreciate all of your hard work. So, congratulations to you, Ms. Voeche, and to your whole staff. Congratulations and thank you for your hard work. the amount of work that is put into this. And it just so happens, you know, they, these are for the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June of 2020, and it takes them this long throughout the country to go through these things and give out these awards. Tonight, we were supposed to have the results, our auditors were supposed to be here to do, get the results of the financial and compliance audit for the fiscal year ending June of 2021. It just ended. And we're always one of the first entities that they come to because we do our closeouts timely, even though we have millions of dollars that have run through our school systems. I mean, we're just a very efficient operation, and David, of course, leads that whole operation in our business department. But the audit is completed, everything is fine, we're set to go, except there's one little glitch, is that every summer, the federal government puts out what they call an audit compliance supplement, and they usually do that in the summer, for all of the federal monies that run through our school system and other entities. And what that does for auditors under the Single Audit Act, it tells them from the compliance standpoint what the rules and regulations are and the specific things they want to look at in terms of compliance measures, not financial measures of how you actually handle the monies, but compliance, if these are allowable costs, what you've spent money on, is it in direct relation to what the federal guidelines have said. Well, that always comes out in the summertime. This summer, when they put that out, they always put out, and an addendum will come out in the fall. And addendums will come out, and they will outline which funds the addendum will address. And this year, one of the funds that the addendum will address is the American Rescue Plan, those federal monies that have been sent out to governmental bodies and school systems in reaction to the COVID from the pandemic and such. And that has not come out yet. So, that addendum, which usually comes out in the fall, it's usually around October, November, and last year it came out December 12th, but we had not had any major, when auditors come in, they choose major federal funds to audit more intensely than your minor federal funds. And this year, the American Rescue Act was one that they were going to do. So, until that addendum comes out with the full disclosure of what types of compliance that they want the auditors to look at, the auditors can't issue their opinion. So, while all the field work is finished, everything is done, everything is fine, you know, David and his team have put together the 150-page document of all of our comprehensive annual financial reports, they can't issue that final opinion until the addendum comes out and they make sure that they have gone through all of the compliance measures that the federal government provides. So, as soon as that happens, and we don't know when it is, but it could happen tomorrow, next week, sometime in November, so the first board meeting after that comes out, then we'll have the auditors come in to actually publicly give their report and opinion on our financial statement. So, David, did I explain that properly? Just make sure if there's any...
That was perfect, Ms. Votch, as always.
No. But anyway, so that's the issue, because we always do it at the October meeting. We're always their first client that they get done right after the fiscal year ends in June, but all school systems are going to be waiting on this if that's identified as one of their major federal funds for the prior year. So, we're in a holding pattern on presenting those documents to you.
Thank you, Ms. Votch, for that explanation, and Mr. Fernandez. Anyone else?
I'd just, I'd just like to say congratulations to you two. 28 years, that's fantastic, and, you know, it goes a long way, I say it every year, about how it makes our jobs easier when we can point to the fact that our accounting is award-winning, and it's been that way for 28 years. I'd like to see the plaques, although it'd be 56 plaques all over the wall right here so we can show it to our constituents, just to show that, hey, there's not a penny out of place here, and it's all spent to put the best product on the field, the best education system that we can afford, and get the most bang for our buck for our kids. So, congratulations again. Thank you very much, Mr. Fernandez, and I know it's not easy. I know it takes a lot of time and effort to do what you do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Okay, anyone else? Again, thank you, Mr. Fernandez, and we all appreciate your hard work. We know you work many, many long hours, and thank you very much.
Yes, he does. He's an incredible asset to the school system. Don't know what we would do without him, and he leads a small but very strong group of people in that upstairs wing of our building that do an incredible job, so.
Thank you again. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee Meeting Minutes of October 12, 2021, into the minutes of the October 26, 2021 regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of September 28, 2021, as published on October 8, 2021. There's a motion by Mr. Long.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is a review of the personnel changes for October 2021.
Just there for your review, does not require any more action.
And those that have highlighted or nuisance the committee meeting? Are there any questions? Mr. Long?
Ms. Votch, I read an article recently about teacher shortage. Is it affecting us greatly?
I think this has been the most difficult year to effectively and completely staff our schools. What is happening, not only statewide but nationwide, there are fewer and fewer young people going into the field of education. If you look at the teacher preparation programs in our colleges and universities, and I think with the article that you're referring to talked a little bit about even LSU had a 57% or whatever decrease in the number of candidates who were having that as their major in college. So, in many, many of the more critical areas, the more difficult to staff areas, we have even fewer potential candidates, like secondary math, science, special education at all levels. But it's even now going into English Language Arts and those areas. We've been successful primarily with the elementary staffing in terms of the number of candidates out there, but even that is becoming a smaller and smaller pool. I think, you know, people say, well, what is, you know, what is the issue? What is the problem? I mean, we can talk everywhere from compensation, which now here in Louisiana, the gap between the salaries, average salaries in Louisiana, and the SRAV, which is the Southern Regional Average, is in excess of $4,000, and that gap continues to widen here. There's also community support and respect for teachers within the community. You know, in many ways, when I was younger and people were encouraged to go into education, and now we have fewer and fewer of our young people being encouraged to go into this profession. And we do, I think there are a lot of young people, and I've said this before, who would love to do so, but if you're the primary breadwinner in your family, it's very difficult to support an entire family on a teacher's salary, and people look for other types of opportunities. So, we've got to do everything that we can to encourage our best and our brightest to take a look at that as a field. We're, at our high school, we're instituting that Aspiring Educators Rising Program, where we are looking at that in conjunction with Nunez Community College as a pathway, where a couple of the dual enrollment classes that are going to be offered will be the first two education courses, which will carry college credit, and helping our kids maybe explore that as one career opportunity along with others that they may be interested in. But if we could encourage our own children and our own young people within our families to really seriously take a look at that as a profession, that would tremendously help what we have out there. But we have to make it a profession in which people feel good being in, where you're compensated fairly, where you're treated professionally, and where you're held in higher esteem within the community, and that's something that we can all do as community members. So, I guess that's a little bit longer answer to a question, do we have trouble staffing? Yes, we have difficulty staffing in our more critical areas, which are the more technical areas that if you go into the private sector, you can earn more in compensation providing for your family. So, we're trying, and we've got our own teaching program, where we are taking young people who have graduated from college, who may decide, well, I think I really would like to become a teacher. They've got to pass a portion of what's called a Praxis Test, which is a national assessment which determines whether that young person knows the content area. So, if they can pass, for example, the math praxis, demonstrating knowledge of the content area, or the English praxis, demonstrating knowledge of the area, where they know the content, then we will take them into the program and teach them how to become teachers, help them learn the instructional strategies, classroom management, those types of things that you would have been taught maybe in a college curriculum that they wouldn't have the advantage of, but what we can make sure of, we can do that internally, but we just need to make sure that person coming in has the knowledge of the content that they will be teaching, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on personnel changes?
I just, I'm familiar with that article as well, and I think there's a task force that was formed.
Yes.
It pointed out that there's a state task force that's looking into this as well.
Right. And, you know, and on Bessie, I'm chairing now the MFE Task Force, which is the Funding Formula for the State, and whether we are able to do it or not, I'm going to do a major push in to see if we can get our legislators and the governor and his executive budget to appropriate additional funding for pay raises, you know, which we need to get those numbers up. But it takes a collective effort, and we've got to have legislators in this state who think that is an important profession to fund. And I know that everyone who's in there asking for money in the General Appropriations Bill feels the same way about their particular area, but, you know, I don't know if it was the Chancellor of Germany or whatever, who, they have a whole different system over there, but when the, and a lot of it is government-driven in terms of medicine and, you know, law and just some different professions who are clamoring for raises, and she said, one, the most important one is the teacher. They're the ones who taught all these people to do these other things. And so, that was the one, the profession that we're going to take, I think, a long, hard look at and how we can elevate it not only monetarily, but in prestige as well. So, anyway, yes, there is a task force looking into it, but you know how it goes, got to put your money where.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, we're going to see how that works out.
Thank you, Mrs. Dyson.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else? Well, I know we did mention some of the retirees, but I'm going to mention them again, and we have an additional retiree. So, congratulations and thank you very much to all of these retirements. Unfortunately, they're retiring from our system, but we want to congratulate and thank each of them for their long-term service to the Sabrina Parish School System and for all of our children, and that is Janice Alfonso, Cynthia Hernandez, Shirley Vogt, Alice Williams. So, we want to thank you again for your long, many years of service, and we wish you a very happy retirement to each of you. Thank you. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is the approval of the administration's request for permission to advertise, to bid for food products, the period of January 1, 2022, through June 30, 2022, for classes 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, seasoning staples, canned goods, frozen foods, poultry, eggs, meat and meat products, and seafood products. And there was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? Or questions? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy BE, and there was a recommendation by the committee. And we've discussed these policy changes in total at the committee meeting. Mr. Long?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Long. Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy ID. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? And maybe this 5.3 has to do with the curriculum. Any discussion? Okay. There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? Or questions? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy BE. And there was a recommendation by the committee. And we've discussed these policy changes in total at the committee meeting. Mr. Long?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Long. Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy ID. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? And maybe, this 5.3 has to do with the curriculum. Any discussion? Okay. There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy IDCC, and it's concerning the kindergarten and preschool. There was a recommendation by the committee. Is there a motion at this time? Motion by Ms. Jackson to accept. Seconded by? Aye.
I'll second.
Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy JBA. And this is concerning compulsory school attendance. There is a motion by Mr. Long. Seconded by Mr. England. All, any, any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next is an adoption of revision to School Board Policy IDDF. And there was a recommendation by the committee. And this particular policy is concerning the education of students with exceptionalities.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. White. Is there a second? By Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy IDFC. There was a recommendation by the committee, and this is concerning cameras in special education classrooms. There's a motion by Mr. England. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy JBC. There was a recommendation by the committee. And this one has, is concerning school admission.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? I just want to make one clarification at one point at the committee meeting when we discuss all these. These were all state mandates and also to follow state law. Some of them, the policies were changed with wording. So, but it's all to, so that we're in the guidelines of state law. Okay, all right. So, any other discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision to School Board Policy JBCE. There was a recommendation by the committee. And this one is concerning federal and state requirements for implementing school choice. Is there a motion on the floor at this time to accept this policy change? Motion by Mr. Long. Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption to revision of School Board Policy JBCE-R. There was a recommendation by the committee. And this one is concerning the rules and regulations for implementation of Louisiana public school choice. Is there a motion on the floor at this time to accept?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is an adoption of the revision of School Board Policy JR. And there was a recommendation by the committee to accept. And this one is concerning student privacy and education records. There's a motion by Mr. England. Is there a second? By Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is a consideration of adopting Resolution of St. Bernard Parish School Board versus Allergan Limited et al. Docket Number 20-1319. Do we need to read this resolution into the minutes? I would assume.
Probably this one, yes.
Okay.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, I can read it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the resolution reads as such. "A resolution authorizing St. Bernard Parish School Board, herein referred to as this governmental unit, to join with the state of Louisiana and other local governmental units as a participant in the Louisiana State Local Opioid Litigation Memorandum of Understanding, the MOU, and any subsequent formal agreements necessary to implement the MOU, including but not limited to the subdivision settlement participation form and Exhibit K of the distributor settlement agreement and the Jansen settlement agreement. Whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board has suffered harm from the opioid epidemic, whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board recognizes the entire state of Louisiana has suffered harm as a result from the opioid epidemic, whereas the state of Louisiana has pending action in state court in a number of Louisiana cities and parishes have also filed an action in reference National Prescription Opioid Litigation, MD Number 2804, ND Ohio, the opioid litigation. And the St. Bernard Parish School Board is a litigating participant in that action, whereas the state of Louisiana and lawyers representing certain various local governments involved in the opioid litigation have proposed a unified plan for the allocation and use of prospective settlement dollars from the opioid-related litigation. Whereas the Louisiana Memorandum of Understanding, the MOU, sets forth a framework of a unified plan for the proposed allocation and use of opioid settlement proceeds. And it is anticipated that formal agreements implementing the MOU will be entered into at a future date. And whereas, participation in the MOU by a large majority of Louisiana cities and parishes will materially increase the amount of funds to Louisiana and should improve Louisiana's relative bargaining position during additional settlement negotiations. Whereas failure to participate in the MOU will reduce funds available in the state, that is, city and parish, and every other Louisiana city and parish. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this governmental unit, Section 1, that this governmental unit finds that participation in the MOU would be in the best interest of the governmental unit and its citizens, and that such a plan ensures that almost all of the settlement funds go to abate and resolve the opioid epidemic. And each and every city and parish receives funds for that harm that is, has suffered. Section 2, that this governmental unit hereby expresses its support of a unified plan for the allocation and use of opioid settlement proceeds as generally described in the MOU, attached hereto as Exhibit A. Section 3, that Walton Legere Jr. is hereby expressly authorized to execute the MOU and substantially the form contained in Exhibit A. And in Section 4, that Doris Votch is hereby authorized to execute any formal agreements implementing a unified plan for the allocation and use of opioid settlement proceeds that is not substantially inconsistent with the MOU. And this resolution, including but not limited to the subdivision settlement participation form and the distributor settlement agreement and the Jansen settlement agreement. Section 5, that the clerk be and hereby is instructed to record this resolution in the appropriate record book upon its adoption. Section 6, the clerk of this governmental unit is hereby directed to furnish a copy of this ordinance resolution to the Louisiana Attorney General, Attorney General Jeff Landry in care of Bill Stiles, Post Office Box 94005, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, 70804. And Section 7, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, given under our hand and the seal of St. Bernard Parish on this 26th day of October 2021. Is there any discussion? Or are there any questions? Does the board care to join into a joint resolution on this resolution? All in favor, Mr. Egan?
Maybe I didn't hear it right. Wait, let me open the bottom folder. But when you're talking about, in Section 6, you're talking about a certified copy. I think you didn't add certified. And these type of documents will bounce if they don't have very particular statements in there, such as it has to be certified. So, if you would just correct that, we're fine.
Okay. Section 6 does say furnish a certified copy of this ordinance resolution to the Louisiana Attorney General. And if I failed to say certified? My apologies. Okay, it's in there. Thank you, Mr. Egan. We appreciate that. Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor of the joint resolution? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Item is passed. And the next item on the agenda is the consideration of adopting the resolution to approve and enter into the settlement agreement regarding Priscilla Alfonso versus Kent Mitchell Bus Sales and Services LLC and Wayne &amp; Dane LLC, 19-1514. And in your folder is the resolution. And Ms. Votch, I guess we need to, do we need to read this into the minutes, even though it's a litigation?
I think we can just do it with a motion.
I think you can just do this one with a motion.
Okay. And this was, okay, it was part of a case in litigation. So, I will just again name the settlement agreement regarding Priscilla Alfonso versus Kent Mitchell Bus Sales and Services LLC and Wayne &amp; Dane LLC, 19-1514. Does the board wish to join in a joint acclamation? Yes. Okay. Any discussion? There's a joint acclamation on the floor. All in favor of the joint acclamation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda or item to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Anyone have anything? Okay, you always have before the next committee meeting to place items on the agenda. Next item was superintendent's notes.
Um, I think everything was covered in the super news today, which was quite lengthy and very good. It's just a reminder, though, to everyone that this coming Monday and Tuesday, November 1st and 2nd, were initially intended to be days when students did not come to school. Monday was a school holiday. And Tuesday, November 2nd, was a professional development day for our teachers. But because of the hurricane and the number of days that we missed, we have turned both of those days into instructional days. So, a reminder to all of our parents and community members that we will be having classes Monday, November 1st and Tuesday, November 2nd.
Thank you, Ms. Votch. And on behalf of the entire St. Bernard Parish School System, we want to wish all of our children and staff members a very happy and a very safe Halloween. But you do have school the next day, remember? Sorry. And that's because of the missed days that we've had with Hurricane Ida. I know we have a lot of disappointed students out there. You know, they have to go to school the day after. So, trick or treat early. And happy Halloween again, and safe Halloween to all. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? Mr. Egan? All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.